Now I'd like to call this meeting of the town of Rhinebeck, our first one of 2021 to order. And I believe the agenda stands as posted. I think we're gonna have a few continuations, but we will be opening these five public hearings. Could I have a motion to approve Jim's meeting notes?
So move, Cody.
Second, Edna.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And I hope you've all had a chance to read the December 21 minutes. Could I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
Oh, move, Edna.
Second, Kathy.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Very good. Okay, I have no correspondence and announcements other than to say, my understanding is the town board is having a reorganization meeting tomorrow night. They're going to go into executive session to decide who they're going to be appointing to the planning board, as well as apparently the chair for the planning board, and I guess for the ZBA. I saw none of those are on their agenda, posted agenda, so we can probably read about it in the paper Wednesday morning. At this point, I don't know if we're at 6:35 yet. Close enough. Okay, our first public hearing is the Rhinebeck Performing Arts Center and site plan review. They're discussing they wish to do an outdoor stage. Is there a representative here of the Performing Arts Center?
Lou is on the phone. I'm unable to Zoom. I apologize. I have antiquated equipment, but you can have my voice.
Okay, and who will be presenting?
So. I guess I will. Is Warren here?
Yeah, Warren's here. Yep.
Great. Warren, do you want to present it?
I will. I will. I'll start out. For some reason, a lot of times when I click video, nothing happens, so I'll try that on or off a couple of times. Not that you need to see me, but it might help. There we are. Okay, so this proposal, which of course the planning board has seen before, but the public may not have, is to put a a outdoor stage covered with a roof but open on three sides, on the west side of the Performing Arts Center, sort of centered on the overhead door that you could see on that west facade of the primary gamble roof. And this would allow for outdoor performances in summer weather or warmer weather without as much concern for rain. When this was initially proposed late last year, maybe mid last year, the thought was that this could allow the Performing Arts Center to have performances outdoors, at least through the holiday season, because obviously they could not have performances inside, the prohibition against indoor theater performances for reasons we all understand very well. And the Performing Arts Center had erected a temporary stage of plywood panels on the ground on the west side, and that seemed to work okay for a while. I think for initially, they were having people sit outdoors on the lawn, and then when it turned out that they couldn't do that, they came up with a scheme to have people sit in cars fanned out on the lawn facing the west facade, facing this outdoor stage socially distanced. They could actually pick up the audio from the stage on their car sound systems, Bluetooth or some other similar system, and watch from the safety and independence of their own vehicles. And so that's what this parking plan shows. It shows vehicles right across the lawn to allow them to watch outdoor performances, including in rain or other inclement weather, for as long as the season could continue. Obviously, we're all hoping that sometime in 2021. We're hoping that in 2021, we'll be able to start having performances back inside the theater. We will no longer have to have any lawn parking, but the Performing Arts Center has considered that having an outdoor stage for seasonal use where people can again sit on the lawn or on folding chairs would be a nice feature if they're gonna go to the trouble to put up the stage of the roof. But that's really what the substance of this proposal is. The, again, the parking on the lawn is seen as a temporary measure, but if they go ahead and build this outdoor stage with the roof, however, the thought is that would not necessarily be temporary. It could be used seasonally in appropriate weather. And I guess with that, I would ask if Lou Truppani wants to make any other initial comments here before we open it up to the planning board and the public for comments and questions?
No, you've stated it very succinctly. And as, you know, to echo Warren, we sincerely hope that by the fall of 2021, the indoor restrictions are lifted and it will obviate the necessity of parking cars on that lawn, because I know that is a concern. The added feature of having people sit on the lawn during the summer, this year was incredibly wonderful. The town, people who came, who really loved it, you know, they could drink wine, they could eat barbecue and watch a show. It was very much like going to Central Park and seeing the New York Public Theater Shakespeare Festival. So we really enjoyed it, and the people who came enjoyed it. The reason for the roof is that we had to cancel so many performances because of inclement weather. It did not affect audience members. They brought umbrellas and tents when they saw it was raining, and that was kind of fun. The actors were totally unprotected, and so we just couldn't do a show. It was much too dangerous, slipping and sliding on a wet stage, so that's what the roof is for.
Anyone else from the applicant have anything they'd like to say at the moment?
Anything else I would like to say?
At the moment?
I, yeah, I know that sound, noise, Warren forwarded me a couple of letters. I'm a little concerned about that because I take complaints very seriously, and I had asked my staff to tell me if anybody had complained, and I received no emails or phone calls or anything. I got one complaint from a gentleman who came by because one of our outdoor lights, the timer, had failed, and the light was on all night, and he came by to say that it disturbed him. So we disabled it until we were able to fix it. And prior to even building the stage, I had one of my staff hand deliver to every home in the neighborhood a beautiful postcard. It was either left in their door or in their mailbox telling us that we were building an outdoor stage, that it was necessitated by the COVID restrictions, that performances would begin at seven, that we would conclude by 9:30. We apologize for the noise, and I offered everybody free tickets to come to see every show, and only one neighbor responded. They came by and said, "Thank you so much. Yeah, we'll be there. Never mind the freebies. We want to support the arts." But I received no other comments from anybody. But to assure you, when we are outdoors, shows will begin at seven. Shakespeare, which will dominate most of the summer in 2021, will be over by 8:45 or nine o'clock. It'll still be light up. I don't know if we have a musical on tap for the summer. I haven't, because of COVID, I'm unable to plan way forward, and I'm not doing big musicals because it just, the dollars, it doesn't make sense. Outdoors, I cannot make any money. I lose money. But I promise that whatever we do, we'll be down and out by 9:30, 10 o'clock the very latest, cars will be gone. And again, this is only a weekend issue, Thursday, Friday. Well, not even Thursdays anymore, Friday, Saturday, Sundays. So, you know, we will do our best to accommodate our neighbors. I'm sensitive to their needs, and, you know, we try not to interfere.
Thank you. Anyone else speak, wants to speak up with the applicant at the moment? Okay, Delisa and I did the site visit. We went out to take a look, saw how the parking would be set up, how the structure of the, well, it's not a canopy of the, well, the canopy, yes, over the stage, permanent fixture there, permanent feature. And from a structural standpoint, whatnot, it seemed to be, you know, certainly sound. The parking, I think we understand why they wish to do it. The ground does seem somewhat firm there, so I can sort of see where they were coming from. I have read a number of letters have come to the planning board concerned about this summer, I guess, way back when, back 1997, I guess, is when the initial application came to the planning board to build the actual existing building, the actual theater itself. I was on the CAC at the time, not the planning board. And I guess for a couple of years there, there were outdoor performances while the building was being built. I believe it got the CO in 2000. I'm wrong. I'm sure someone can correct me on that. And there had been some concerns about the outdoor performances, noise, things of that sort. I guess one of the questions I have for outdoor performances, oftentimes music can be very loud, things of that sort, but for performances, music, non-musical performances, is there going to be amplification of sound?
The only amplification that we used for Shakespeare was we placed two speakers facing toward the north, I believe, so actually going west toward the river, so that the sound didn't penetrate out onto the road. And that was just the spoken word. We used the same amplification when we did a chorus line, which was the big musical. And that's the only amplification that was used. And the reason we have the amplification is that we got more noise from across the street and the road. The road traffic noise was deafening, and you couldn't hear the spoken word. Our plan is, when we do this, if it's successful, we're going to investigate what kind of a buffer that we can build, either plants, though a sound engineer has advised me that trees and plants don't really work. He suggested some sort of another structure. I don't know what it is. It's very expensive. But it will actually shield that lawn from the road, so we will not have to have so much amplification. And we will not hear noise from across the street.
Okay, I think that, understand that there's road noise, but that may be one circumstance, one condition. Obviously, that can't be controlled. That might suggest that amplification really should not be permitted, because obviously if the road noise is so loud, the amplification has to be significant to overcome the road noise so people can hear the performers. So I think that's something we're gonna have to look into, exactly what is the noise? We do have noise regulations in the town about how much noise can be heard at the edge of a property, and it's different during the daylight hours and evening hours, of course, but I think that that's something that we're gonna take very significantly. The planning board is gonna have to look into this. I am not familiar, as I said, I was not on the planning board at the time. I was at the CAC, and I do remember going to the meetings, discussing the initial application to build this building, and noise and lights were concerns of the neighbors. That was one of the things they were worried about. And I am not, I don't recall, and we're hoping to track this down, if in the original resolution of approval or the original stamp and approved site plan, there were any notes on it with certain conditions as the actual outdoor use of the property. I know that there were prohibitions against storage of materials outside. There was a large storage container of one sort out there that was required to be removed, so I know that that was certainly one of the concerns and one of the conditions that I do recall. But this is something that we have received some concerns with, I think from the description of trying to overcome the road noise, because I know it can be very loud, that would suggest the amplification may be in and of itself quite loud to overcome that, and I think that's something we're gonna have to investigate. My CD is muted. I don't know if she has anything she wanted to add about our site visit at this point, but when she unmuted.
May I say something about the? Yeah, can I say something about the original agreement? I looked
Yes.
for papers, and I did come across, you know, some other issues, but there was nothing but sound. I was the site manager here for the summer of 96 and 97. I didn't become the artistic director until 99, but I know when I was hired in 96, I was told by Donna Stanley and Andy Weintraub that the agreement with the neighbors is that we would ensure that all performances concluded so that cars would be out of here by 11:00 PM. And I know that I was very diligent both of those summers, ensuring that we were down and out by 10:30 or 10:45, and that cars were out of here pretty quick. So I do know that that's what we did in those two summers.
Okay, thank you. Other members of the planning board have questions?
I'm wondering if any measurements of sound have ever been taken as prescribed by the zoning law? For example, a sound level reading taken at a residential property line during, not above 50 dBA during the time period commencing 8:00 PM, ending 7:00 AM? There are a number of such requirements, but I'm wondering, have any sound readings been taken?
Not to my knowledge.
And Edna, I don't believe the town has, because there was a sound meter, but no one knew how to use it, so I don't think it was ever, I don't think it was ever used, which is not the greatest excuse in the world, but that's what we have. Sound clearly is an issue, and it's something I think we need to look into. Any other questions from the members of the planning board at this point?
Michael?
Yes.
How would we look into it?
Well, I think we're gonna have to come up with a sound meter for someone who can, you know, do precisely what you're talking about. We do it for light. Well, we're supposed to do it for light in terms of light trespass, you know, what lumens are allowed at a, you know, a property line from a source on someone's property, someone's project. And so you avoid light trespass, and we're basically kind of talking about noise trespass at this point.
Yeah.
I know that some of the
We have.
letters that we received was someone said that there was a concert, I guess, at the site this summer, and when they were in their house with the windows closed and the air conditioner on, they could still hear the music inside their house. So that would suggest, and I, you know, obviously we don't have a sound meter or anything like that at this point, but it would suggest that the noise was excessive for the neighbors at that point, and that may once again have been to try to overcome the noise on the road. 308 is a busy road, and particularly on weekends, people coming and going around Rhinebeck, it can be very busy, so I do understand that. But I think we do have to figure out some way of addressing this. I know is a major issue with the gun club, the Northern Duchess Rodden Gun Club, in terms of their, when they're operating and the noise for the neighbors and things like that. And this may be another instance where we have to do a little more looking into this to try and ascertain exactly what the noise levels are. Very often, for many events that we sanction for event centers, for things of that sort, one of the, one of the conditions of approval is no outdoor amplification of sound. And quite honestly, that this may fall under a similar, similar condition, given that it is in a residential area, it is in a residential neighborhood, and excessive noise is something that we do our very best to try to mitigate to the fullest extent possible.
We have a director who works here, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
We have, yeah, we have a director who works here frequently, whose husband owns a very successful international sound consulting company. He does sound debatement and sound amplification for theaters and opera houses and parks. Would you allow me to contact him and ask him if he would come and pro bono, do whatever it is you think should be done in terms of measuring what kind of sound actually is emanating and what we could do to solve the issue, rather than you trying to?
I think that would be very helpful, certainly an excellent starting point.
All right, I will do that.
Do we have other comments or questions from members of the board, planning board?
Michael, this is, this is Jim. I have two quick ones, I think, for Warren. So Warren, I mentioned at the last meeting that I had assessed this as being kind of an accessory structure to the building based on the definitions and the code and the way we look at things, garages, even if they're attached, we see it as accessory structures, just because of the way the code's written. The accessory code, the accessory structure requirements state that the structure can't exceed 20 feet in height, and you did put the height on there, you know, which we discussed last time. It looks like it's coming in at 22 feet. Is that something that can be reduced down to the 20 feet for the accessory structure, accessory structure height limitations, or?
I guess I would respond to the question, unless the code has changed, a definition of height for a building with a gable is typically from the average grade around the base of the building to the midpoint or the average between the eve and the ridge, and that would be below 20 feet. If that doesn't apply to this, we could go with a flatter pitch, but at some point it doesn't shed water very well, and it's not so practical.
Right, no, I, yeah, I understand that. So you're saying?
Well, Warren.
Yeah.
Yeah, Warren, we could also, we had measured a 16-foot distance in order to accommodate what lighting would be necessary. I could, you can keep the pitch of your roof, and I can lower the proscenium opening so that the audience could still see the show, and it would necessitate us having to figure out a different lighting scheme. But since these shows are being done in the summer primarily, it, the illumination is mostly again for the actors. It's not, it's not for the audience, but I could accommodate it if it's an issue.
So whether it's that, Warren, or if you're saying the average, you know, as you say, the average grade to the top is gonna be within that 20 feet, you just, when you put on here, it said 22 feet to the ridge, so I assume that that meant that that was the distance. But if you're saying you meet the code, then, you know, that's fine. Maybe just a note to that effect that, you know, the ridge height's 22, but it meets the code definition, or lowering it if you're concerned. But I just want to make sure that we do meet that standard, so we're not having any issues on that end.
Right.
So whichever one you think, you know, you can do, I would appreciate that. The only other question that I had had is, I think we had talked last time about just ensuring, and again, I know this is a unique situation with the parking, but the parking has requirements that the parking area can't be closer than 50 feet to a side or rear lot line, and I know that the back end of the parking was within that 50 feet. I think we talked about maybe you talking with Michelle, just to see if she thought that that applied here or not. Again, I'm not totally sure, because it's not a parking lot, it's not a parking area. It's kind of a unique situation. Did you talk with Michelle about that, or if not, then?
In fact, yeah, Jim, Lou Truppani wrote a memo or a letter to Michelle, and she, I think that she forwarded it on or somehow forwarded it on to the planning board, but she was completely in accordance with, she did not deal with, it was a parking lot, and the parking setbacks and screening aspects of the code did not apply to the lawn parking here for the intermittent seasonally use.
Okay, all right, if that's out there, I apologize. Didn't see it or I missed it, but I'll catch up with that, and it'll take care of that, that comment. Okay, my only other comment was related to noise and lighting, and we're discussing those, so I'm almost at, Michael. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Anyone else from the board before we open it to the public? Okay, if there's anyone in the public who would like to be heard, have comments or questions? If you could, I'd let Jim know, and he will unmute you.
This is Bob Smith. I have comments.
Please, continue.
I have several. I've lived two properties west of the Performing Arts Center since before it was placed there. There were meetings of the planning board back then about the Performing Arts Center going up. The noise was tremendous for the neighbors. There was agreement, the reason the building was built was because of the noise, and the agreement that was given by the Performing Arts Center was that within one year, they would build the building so that we, the neighbors, did not have to participate in all of the shows. So that's a fact. I was at the building planning meeting, and I can tell you some other people who were there who may not no longer be residents. I'm a 37-year resident. In addition to the evening performances this summer, there was a great deal of afternoon activity, amplified activity every afternoon. On the deck of my pool, I could hear every word that was being said. I assume this was the summer children's program. You're right, I didn't complain because I was trying to be a good neighbor and be sensitive to COVID, assuming that your summer program would be canceled or have to be held outdoors. I'm sorry now that I didn't complain, because it obviously, you believe it gave you a foothold to do something we, the neighbors, would prefer did not happen. I received no card asking for my input. Had I received a card from you, you would have had it post haste. I'm disturbed that you were given permission to build an outdoor stage, because it just set a stage for this, you to take the next step forward and do outdoor performances. Let me see if I've missed that. I tried to take notes as you all spoke. Unfortunately, it was a long time between the start of the meeting and me being able to respond. I'm reading through my notes. I think I've pretty well covered it. So the history is that the reason the building went up, and it should have been up in a year, and it went up in, I think, the fourth year, was because of the noise concerns expressed by the neighbors. It was not part of the original plan. And I want the board to understand that I am very opposed to amplified use outdoors of that venue. My neighbor, to the neighbor that's between my home and the Performing Arts Center, actually planted a large row of trees on the property line, which does nothing whatsoever for the sound. This summer, I thought my neighbor was having a huge party. When the sound started, I walked over to the property line, and her property was perfectly quiet. It was all coming from the Performing Arts Center, but it was loud enough that I thought it was next door. Okay, again, this is Bob Smith. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Jim, do we have other people who'd like to comment or have questions?
Not seeing anything, Michael, nothing in the chat box, unless someone else wants to speak right now. I think we're set. Yeah, nothing else, Michael.
Nothing else?
I'm sorry. Oh, hold on, someone just put something in the chat box. A question was just asked if this is a temporary solution for COVID, or is the outdoor stage meant to be permanent?
It was intended originally as a temporary solution, but as we looked at the expense and as we chatted with Warren and also members of the planning board, it seemed as though it was more efficient to consider it a permanent installation. The parking is not a permanent solution. The outdoor structure will be a permanent structure.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions or comments from the public? Anyone in the planning board have any question or comment at this point?
Michael, I just have a quick question in regards to time slots and sound. Obviously, figuring out a solution around sound is important to consider, especially for the neighbors. Is part of it just evening sound, or is this all the time? Is there a way to maybe find some middle ground based on the performance times, or is it, is it now a sound period at all times?
I got the impression from some of the comments that we have received that it was both day and evening performances. I think that there were two more questions, Jim, that came in.
Yeah, there are two more questions that just came into the chat box. One of them asking if the neighbors can see the plans, and yes, those plans are available online. You can get a link to those through the planning board website. All the public hearing materials are available online on the town website, well, through the town website. And then the other question related specifically to this project is, are there, is there any limitation? How many outdoor performances will be allowed? I don't believe that has been a discussion item so far.
No, I don't believe it has.
Perhaps that's something Warren and Lou could speak about and come back with more information. I mean, I can see the question is important, because it's like, is this every weekend? Is this one weekend a month? Will they be alternating in the future performances inside versus outside? And I know it's very hard to figure it out at this point, or to give us, you know, a final sort of schedule, but it would be nice to know which way they're leaning or how they're thinking.
Well, I can give you, I can give you a good estimate based on what our normal production activity is. You could probably count on three weekends of performance a month from the middle of June to the middle of September, and that would be Thursday, I'm sorry, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. You can count on that, because it takes us that long to mount a show. The other concern that I heard voiced, which is a very serious concern, is we do have a summer arts camp, and this summer, New York State allowed that arts camps or any summer camps And, uh, this summer, um, New York State allowed that, that arts camps or any summer camps could be opened if they were outdoors. So that's what we did. We didn't amplify any of those. It was all ambient sound.
That's untrue.
No, they, they, they weren't amplified, not.
That's absolutely untrue.
Well, I'm sorry. Is this Mr. Smith speaking?
It is Mr. Smith.
Okay. If a summer arts camp had a performance on a Saturday morning, which are many of the summer arts camps do, that may have been amplified, but the actual camp itself, when they were rehearsing or dancing on the lawn, they were on the lawn. So it couldn't have been amplified. So that is true. A Saturday morning show, if it were the result of an arts camp and it would have only been one uh, performance of, of any particular workshop. And that would have been between the hours of, I think, like eleven and twelve-thirty on a Saturday morning. Those are the only things that may have been amplified. But the actual camps themselves were, you know, just kids.
I know there were kids, but I also know they were amplified. And I know they were like every day of the week.
Yeah, the, the arts camp ran from nine to three, uh, Monday through Friday for seven weeks. But I can, I, I don't know how you know that they were amplified. I, I know they weren't.
A thousand, I live a thousand feet from the Performing Arts Center. I could hear every word on my pool deck. Ask Ellie Fells. She lives next door. Ask her.
I think that we have to, uh, agree that sound is an issue that we need to look into here. This is obviously and apparently historically has been an issue that we need to really look into and find a resolution to. The, the situation now really does not seem that it's, uh, appropriate. There's another question here, Jim, um, about parking.
Yep. We just got another question about parking, um, saying there, there were already parking issues, that there was overflow. I guess likely from performers parking along the grass alongside the road, uh, to enter the private portion of Salisbury Court. So I don't know if there's any, anything we can state to that, but what may or may not have happened or has happened.
Do you, do you have facilities for overflow parking? I know the parking regulations are usually based upon the seats inside the facility, things of that sort. But has there ever been any, uh, attempt or anything like that to address over, overflow parking for performances?
Yeah, uh, the, the, um, the two things that I know is, um, we cleared, um, an area on the pond side of the road that leads to the private development behind us so that you could park a car and nose in, so it doesn't interfere with the road. And that overflow is only for cast and crew. It's not for the general public. I do remember that we have an agreement with the tennis court that if necessary, we could use, um, some of their facility. I don't think we've ever had to do that. I do know that amendments that we've made to parking have been mostly during the winter when, uh, snow plowing of our lot reduced our parking to about sixty percent of what it normally would be because of the berms. And what we did one or two winters was plow out a portion of the lawn that, uh, faces Route three oh eight and we parked some cars there, nose in against the berm. But during the summer, I, you know, I have to be frank with you, since the decline of two thousand and eight, our audience has fallen off by about seventy-five percent. So where I used to play to twenty-six thousand people a year, I'm only playing to about twenty-one, maybe twenty-two. I, I haven't had an overflow in years.
Are the overflow parking areas marked out on the site plan for this, for the, uh, Performing Arts Center?
Uh, they were during the original application and approval.
Okay. I think there are a couple more questions came in, Jim.
Yep, um, I'll switch to the other sheet. Um, there's a question about the two emergency exits, right and left. Will they in any way be obstructed by the roof construction? I believe you can see from the sketches that that is not the case and Warren just asked you to confirm that.
Yeah, that's correct. They will not be blocked.
Okay. Uh, the other question is, is there any new exterior lighting included in the plan? Uh, and I do believe, Warren, there were two lights proposed that are shown on your.
There, uh, at the two sides of the, uh, the roof over the stage, there are spotlights, uh, that would aim down as noted at the front of the parking area just to, uh, assist people in finding the area without hitting the stage. That's about it.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Um, so just to back up my other question before and to clarify, continuing through the period that we're dealing with COVID, you talked about three weekends a month, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, exterior performances. Does that, one question is, does that mean that the fourth weekend of the month, there's no performance or, um, is there a? So that's, that's one question there. And then going forward with, uh, hopefully after we've moved out of COVID, do you ever envision using the interior and the exterior during the same time period?
Um, to answer your first question, uh, the off week in a month is a rehearsal, uh, period. So it's not a performance period. Do we intend to use the spaces simultaneously? Not at the same time. What we're envisioning is, for example, the Shakespeare Festival, what we're considering is a Friday night indoor performance of Henry the Fifth on the Globe stage. And then perhaps a Saturday, um, afternoon performance of another show on the outdoor stage. And then maybe the Saturday night indoor, so that there would never be two things. Sound for us would be an impossibility. You, we would bleed through because it's a thin wall that separates both stages. Also, we couldn't accommodate all the actors. And if COVID guidelines are still in some kind of effect, and I'm sure they will be, because even if the indoor stage is eventually open, from what I'm understanding, what the rules are going to be in New York City is that we're going to have to eliminate approximately two seats out of every three. So my capacity of a hundred and sixty-five is going to go down to sixty, fifty-five. I, I can't tell. So we can't do two at the same time. I mean.
In the scenario you. Okay. In the scenario you just sort of ran through for us of the a Friday night, Saturday morning, Saturday night, that would be on a, could be on a daily basis and increase in overall traffic going in and out of the property on, say, a Saturday where you had two different performances. Is that right?
Yes. Yeah. What, what it would be is on a Saturday, you might have traffic between, um, if we did a show at two o'clock, that we would have traffic between one and two. The show would be down by three-thirty or four. So you would have traffic until four-thirty. And then for a seven o'clock show, you might have traffic at six-thirty. The seven o'clock show would be down at eight-thirty, uh, traffic until nine. But I can, can, can guarantee you this and, and I think you can all appreciate this. The kind of show that we're proposing would be Shakespeare or the Greeks or Chekhov. And an average audience for a Shakespearean production is about forty-five people. It, it, that's just the way it is. The world over. Now, if I said I was doing, uh, Les Miserables or Phantom of the Opera at two o'clock in the afternoon, I'd, I'd have two hundred people clamoring for a hundred and fifty seats. But the kind of shows that we're proposing are not going to be heavy traffic shows.
Well, I, I think that it leads to the overall concerns about, you know, traffic and the intensity of use. And, you know, maybe we'll just keep working toward trying to get a better handle on that. Because things could change in the future. Um, and, and maybe audiences will come back, you know, maybe not next year, but certainly the decision we're making here will, will be far reaching in terms of the use.
Well, can I, can I just say something? I, I, from your mouth to God's ear, but the trend, as predicted by people who are in the business, is that the theater is never going to recover. What we are now doing is we're live streaming. So we are doing a small scale show on our stage with no audience in attendance. And we're live streaming it to people's homes. And that is the wave of the future. That is what theater will now become. It'll be Playhouse ninety. I don't know if you all are old enough to remember the early nineteen fifties, live theatrical performances on television. That's what we are now doing. In fact, we're opening our first major show this Friday, live streamed. It's a, um, a monologue show. It's, one character appears at a time. There's one actor on the stage. There's one photog- there's one cameraman, one sound person. That's it. There are three people in the house. No more. And we live stream it to your house. That's what it's going to be from now on.
Calls into.
I mean, we're hoping.
Calls into question.
We're hoping. Well, we're, the investment for the summer was an excellent investment because it was the experience of sitting on the lawn and drinking wine and eating food and experiencing the dusk while watching a Shakespearean play. That is infinitely worth the investment. But for the rest of the year, it's not the investment. That, that's not what this is about. And again, this is a short-term fix.
Any other questions or comments from planning board members or the public at this time? I'm guessing that's it for tonight.
Here's so, Michael. Yep.
Okay. I'd like to continue this public hearing to February first at six forty-five. It'll give us a chance to look into, uh, certainly the noise concerns that we have. Some of the other, other questions that have been raised about the intensity of use and things of that sort. So, uh, could I have a motion to continue this public hearing to February first at six forty-five, please?
Someone with melody.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Very good. I think, um, for the applicant, if you can pursue, uh, working with the, uh, acoustic, uh, engineer, the sound engineer that you were discussing, uh, getting some ideas of how we might try to resolve the issues of noise, uh, and actually get a, a, you know, a sound measurement on exactly what we're, what we're dealing with. That would be very helpful.
I, I will do that and I will be in touch with you. I hope he will do it. He's, he's a very successful guy and he's got a lot on his plate. And he's very expensive. So I can guarantee it'll be pro bono. But if I have to pay for it, I will.
And I think there was one more comment, Jim, that came in in the chat box.
Uh, yeah, there's one more comment. Uh, someone said they appreciate having the center here and our children take classes there. We like the summer program and hope we can all work together to make it happen in a sustainable way.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Well, we'll all see you all next month. About a month from now and see if we can actually work out some of these problems to, uh, everyone's, uh, everyone's satisfaction. Quite a goal, I'm sure, but, uh, let's give it our best shot. So thank you all very much.
All right. I appreciate your time and energy. I thank you all. I thank our neighbors. I thank the board. So I'm just going to ring off. Okay?
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. Stay healthy, everybody.
Okay. Public hearing is Courtney Canfield, two sixty Reincliffe Road, Site Planner Bureau.
Yes, my name is Courtney Canfield and I am, uh, had appeared before in relation to a, uh, accessory or a structure there on the shed on the side of my garage. Got a request for some additional information or site visit was conducted. I had provided some, uh, some sketches and pictures to, uh, Jim to kind of show the drainage before and after and, um, responded to all the requests from our last visit.
And who did the site visit?
Uh, Edna and Sharon did it.
Yep.
Okay. What do you have to tell us?
Um, we were there with George Baker from the C A B and I was able to take some photos, which I believe you have, Jim. I think we were just to go through the photos. That could take us through the site visit and Sharon, maybe you could comment as we go through them.
Well, I can't see them, but, uh, I have, I have the pictures that he submitted in the application too.
Okay.
I'm bringing them up right now. Give me one second. I have to do them one at a time. Okay. The first one should be up right now.
No, that's the last one.
Oh, they're in order? Okay. Um, let me, is that the first one?
Um, you're getting there though.
They're not, they're not ordered. Which, which one would you like first? Um, there's.
I sent you, uh, one titled View of Garage Lean To Use For Storage. That, that was the first one.
That one?
Yeah.
Okay. There's just that number.
So this is a view, um, basically from the road, although it's obviously much closer. Uh, which gives you a sense of the inside of the area and it's used as, uh, storage for storage. There is a, uh, second photo, Jim, that shows the neighbor to the west as viewed from the lean-to. There you go. So I'm standing kind of partly inside the unit and, um, looking toward the neighbor to the west. Here I had some concerns about the view of the, uh, from, from that house, uh, toward the storage unit. Sharon, I think you did not share my concern.
Uh, no, the, the house is far enough away. They have, uh, they already have like a fence or there to, to screen their privacy for their, their little patio out there. Between that house and this place, there's actually two other private driveways that, uh, that looks like on the survey map. So it's not a direct neighbor. Um, but it's not that big a, it's not that big a storage area. And if the trees and, and natural, uh, plantings that are there on the bank remain and are maybe enhanced, it will help, uh, diminish the view.
The, I'll also add too, that the years I rented the house prior purchasing, that area was occupied by a collection of three junk garden crackers, uh, old industrial waste. And, um, uh, it was basically a junkyard for the years before I moved in.
So you've improved it. But that's good. Let me continue. Um, so I didn't, I didn't quite share Sharon's view simply because typically storage of these kinds of materials might be, uh, to the rear of a property. And I, and I thought that they were reasonably visible from the neighbor. On the other hand, as you will see some, uh, from some future photos, screening would be, uh, extremely difficult if, if attempted with plantings. One of the comments that you made, Sharon, while we were there is that there is no gutter on the roof of the lean-to. And, um, Jim, I think if you go to the next photograph, no, that's not the one. It's, it's the one before. No, that's not the one. It's, it's the one before.
Actually, in the, in the photo I provided, you can see the drip line under the edge. Now there's a gutter that's being put on to move all that back to the back of the property. What's coming off? It's, it's coming off now. There's a drip line there and they hadn't been able to do it a couple of weeks ago because of the snow. But where that erosion is, you can see where we've done all the plantings. We got the plantings in on the other side of the house and along the side up by the house. And this area here will restore this where it's eroded to, to prevent that. And then, and then do like probably a tree. We've done a large, like a 15 foot pine, a couple of them there on the east side of the house. So probably do something long at in here.
So there is, as you can see, a downspout that's shown next to the lean to. And that was what was causing this erosion of the bank. Have you changed the route of that water?
The route of that downspout hasn't, but I, the, the part of what's causing that now is that the 28 foot ridge line along this. It in, in the photo that I had provided, you can see like where it's coming right off. It's augmented. That's in, in the past, there's been some because of that downspout. But with the addition of the gutter along there, that will eliminate that. Then we'll restore this area like we have the rest. You can see where we've seeded and put down the geotextile fabric and it's all taken very nicely. And this area here needs to be done once the gutter's in.
Right. But if that downspout remains, I think it will continue to wash, no, no matter what you do on the bank.
It's, it, it hasn't in the years I've been there, but I can also reroute that downspout very easily.
Okay. Jim, can we go to the next photo?
All right. I'm going to take a guess. Which one is it? I've got five, but they're not numbered. Was it this one?
Uh, yeah. Photo of the erosion caused by the downspout. And that's, that's showing the, what is it? A cinder block?
Yeah, there's a block in there that we put in. We can, again, once the, the weather cooperates, we did a lot of the yard work. Had a landscaper, kind of professional landscaper and do the trees and stuff to the, to the east. And, and you may have noticed as you came up, all the landscaping to the west side of the house and the, it's come out very nice, but they need to do in this area. And the, we'll, we'll restore that, put topsoil in there and another tree. So from, from the road now, it's pretty much, I submitted with the original application, a photo from the center line of Rhine Cliff Road. And it's, it's pretty much obscured by the trees and stuff during a leaf on condition. But we put another tree right in the middle of here to, to deal with this easily.
Jim, I think we have just one more photo and this was just something that we noticed while we were there. And that was that the, the base of this tree is smothered by gravel and lawn fill. Is that still the case? I mean, that tree is not going to be happy over the long term with soil up so high against its trunk.
I don't know, but I can have, the, the, the tree people came in a while back. A number of those trees are also not in good health. Unrelated to this and, and they came in and did several thousand dollars for the tree removal, just to get rid of some of the dead stuff. One in fact had fallen just on the other side of the garage. And it may be prudent to even take a look at this one. We had one in a recent windstorm that went down that was quite a bit larger than this and came down right across the yard.
You've talked about some plantings. Did you bring any photos or anything that show what you plan or what you've already done?
I don't, um, I, I'd be happy to send them what, what we've already done around the house.
Could you reiterate what sort of plantings you have done and plan to do?
Sure. We, uh, on the west side of the house. We put two, probably what are they, 15, 18 foot? Anyway, two, two very large, very full pine trees.
Can you go to the site plan, Jim? Can you put the site plan up?
Give me one second. I'll bring it up. Have to rotate it.
You were saying the new plantings would.
The, the, the new plantings to the, uh, let, let me get oriented here. Okay. To the, what will be the far left side of this drawing? Really at about the point where it says 21.9, those two locations. We have worked with our neighbor next door. He put four small trees in on his side of the property line. And we put two, two white pines, two large white pines at almost exactly where those 21.9s are.
And are there any plantings you've done or plan at the lean to?
The, the, they'll back around the lean to probably another white pine where you boxwood and then boxwood.
And where would they go?
Uh, probably from about the edge of the garage down across there, there, right in that area to obscure the view from the view from the drive. Like I say, you can't see it from Rhine Cliff Road. And, and the, the, the leaf on picture is included in the package, but they'll go right there. And then on, on the other side of the house, on the right side of the house too, we put, what kind of were those? Boxwoods, a whole row of them along there and cleaned all that area all up. It's where all the utilities had been for years. We, we cleaned all that up and, and I'll, I'll be happy. I'll send pictures of that area too.
What are your thoughts about protecting your neighbor's view to the west, looking toward your lean to and the storage there?
Toward the west. It's, um, it would be easy to put probably some sort of plantings in along, like out from that area. I don't think frankly, they can see it there over frequently and no one's ever mentioned it. Mrs. Ruger next door and, and her daughter and, and son-in-law are there. And the house that you're referring to is a rental property and it's changed. You know, we've got new residents last year. They've got three small children. They are often out in the backyard and in, in all candor, I don't think they've ever even noticed it. But I have no objection to doing some sort of planting. We're doing extensive landscaping anyway, so it, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. That's all I have, Michael.
Okay. Thank you, Edna. Sharon, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, no, and then I, you did get the C A B report and that also covered things pretty well.
Okay. Is there a rep from the C A B here who would like to give the report? Apparently not. I believe we was all sent to us. I believe we've all read it. Any questions from members of the planning board for the applicant? Okay, Jim, any members of the public wish to speak?
I see nothing in the chat box, Michael.
Okay.
Who else has spoken?
Does any member of the planning board feel that we should be continuing the public hearing? Or is the information received sufficient for us to proceed to an approval application? An approval resolution, I'm sorry. Okay. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I assume.
Second, Delise.
Thank you, Delise. Thank you, Kathy. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. I have a resolution. And Jim, if you'll chime in when I get to point number three.
So will.
Okay. The town of Rhine, the planning board here reacts as follows in the application by Courtney Canfield for site plan approval under Town Code Chapter 125 for construction of an addition to an existing garage at six, at 260 Rhine Cliff Road within the R M one residential medium zoning district. We reaffirm the proposed action as type two under seeker. Based upon the view of submitted information, including reports from the planning board members and C A B W A C members on their site visit project property. We find the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter 125. And with respect to the application for site plan approval. Jim, is this where you wish to, well, you wanted to have that?
Yep. So, so a little different than, than what we've done in the past. We do believe that the, as we've noted here on the screen, we find the proposed work and intended use to be mostly consistent with the town code. With the exception, and I did note this in my memo, that the board does not find that the lean to structure is an awning, but is utilizing the decision of the zoning administrator, which is determined as such. And such approves the application inclusive of the application material and plans by the iconic engineering. And the reason for that is just to make sure that it is clear that, you know, we had, some of us have discussed this. And I think it was talked about, just to, to note in the file that, that, you know, we are utilizing the zoning administrator's determination on what the structure is that's, that's been put on the side of the garage.
Thank you, Jim. And 3B authorized the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of the below conditions and or requirements within six counter months of the adoption of this resolution. One submission of the above cited site plan and the form and number specified within Town Code Chapter 125, except as may be modified to a lesser number by the chair in consideration of filing and distribution requirements. Two, payment of any outstanding fees and or reimbursable amounts due to town of Rhine Beck related to the review and processing of applications subject to this resolution. And three receipt of all approvals, authorizations or certifications required herein for many of the town, county, state or other agencies required to undertake the proposed actions. Could I hear a motion to approve, please?
So will Sharon.
Second, Kathy.
Thank you. I'll poll the board. Kathy?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Very good. Okay. Once we get the final site plan and it has all the necessary stamps, seals and whatnot on it. I can stamp and sign it and you can then go and get a building permit to, actually even, I guess you already got the building permit. But then this legalizes what was done.
Very good.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Our next public hearing. Michael Chambers, 30 Way Road, Site Plan Review, Single Family Dwelling.
Good evening. This is Kyle Diamond from New Dimension Construction on this call as well as Michelle Droll at the, the architect as well. What we've brought for the.
What's proposed?
Sure. So what we brought for the planning board is the owners are proposing to construct a two bedroom house and an associated septic system. We've already submitted to the Department of Health. We're on our second submission, so things are going with them. A couple of comments from the board from our last meeting. I think, Jim, you have that, that, that site plan that shows the curtain drain there. So it's from the art, the one previous 130 Valley website plan.
This one?
Yeah, perfect. So what you'll note on this plan here is that the engineer, so we have obviously the primary, which is in front of the house. The secondary is behind the proposed home. Has the green, whereas the purple is the primary. Right. So what we've done is we've put a curtain drain outside of the wood line there to protect the primary. And the note on the plan basically states that the only way that we would put that curtain drain in the woods and therefore have to, you know, remove some trees would be if the primary failed in the event that it failed. So that's, that's one thing that we did. And then on the other plan there, Jim, if you want mine, clicking on that next one. Thank you. So what we've done is, well, we have included the, the site plan with topography. We have located the, the topography for the existing. And then we also have the proposed topography on this plan as well. We've labeled what's behind the house, a proposed location propane tank. That would be buried as well as a proposed generator back there. There was a comment regarding the stairs alongside of the building. Which you might not be able to see from this plan, obviously, is that this is a fairly flat spot in the property. So the, the grade would be adjusted so that no water would be running at the base and stairs. So that's, I know there are some other, we have a rendering that we've submitted of the, of the, of the house. I met with the, the C A B on site and that pretty well brings, brings me up to date.
Any other comments from, from the applicant representatives at this point? Okay. I know that the site visit was somewhat obstructed by a significant snowfall. I think a drive-by took place. I don't know that, um, not being able to get on site, given the information that was necessarily an issue here. You said that the C A B was on site. I don't know. The representative is here right now. Apparently not.
Joe, I forget his last name.
Joe. Okay. Joe Baker perhaps?
That, that sounds right. It was a couple, couple of weeks back we met.
George Baker?
George, yes. Thank you, Sharon.
Perhaps I'm wrong in my memory of the name.
Well, I, I didn't do any better. Members of the planning board, do you have any questions for the applicant's representatives? Any concerns you would like to express? Okay.
Now, will the, will the new house be in the same area as the house that was demolished?
A similar area, I, I believe, yes.
Okay.
Michael, this is Jim. Kyle, just like to thank you for the additional information. And then also, you know, looking at, you know, moving the, you know, the reserve system and, and the, the comment about the, the drain. Those were comments that I had made just because I saw that a lot of that was encroaching on what looks like a pretty decent woodland area. You know, on a, on a steeper slope. So, you know, minimizing the impact, potential impact there, if it's ever necessary, I think is a, is a positive change to the plans. So thank you for that.
You're, you're welcome. The, the owners were readily happy to do that.
Jim, do we have any questions or comments from the public?
Not seeing any, Michael.
Okay.
Just a quick, quick motion.
I'm sorry?
I just had a quick question, looking, looking at the rent screen. It, it looks like the host is sitting on a platform with steps going off in three directions. Is that right?
I think I might defer to Michelle since it's her, her design.
The, my question is, is there future landscaping planned?
Yes. I mean, they're, they're trying to keep as much from the site as possible. So this, um, this was really just a massing diagram to help the client understand, you know, kind of the sizing of the house. She wanted to have a large deck around it. So this is to reflect this kind of large deck that kind of steps down to the, to the garden that she had put in this year. So you notice back on the site plan, there's a, there's a large garden kind of right in front of where these platforms are. So this is, this is supposed to be a deck that they can sit out on and, and look at the garden.
Thanks.
And there's also a slot kind of a view through kind of down where that existing gravel driveway is up to that white church on the hill. That they, they really like that view as well.
Any other questions or comments?
Not seeing any, Michael.
Your motion to, I'm sorry?
I just said, I'm not seeing any on my end, Michael.
Okay. Thank you. Could I hear a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Almost, Mel. Second, Melody.
I think we just lost him. Oh. Maybe he's back. Hold on a second.
He's coming back. Okay. Okay. Motion, do I hear a second before I die again?
I, I seconded melody.
Thank you. Thank you, Mel. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Very good. I, I have a resolution. The town of private planning board here by access follows in the application by Michael Chambers for site plan approval. In your town code after one, two, five, for construction of a house at fifty nine way, Valley Road. In the R L five residential low density zoning district, we reaffirm the post action as type two under seeker. Based upon review of some information including course of planning board members and C A B W A C members on their site visit project property. We find proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter one, two, five. And with respect to the applicants for site plan approval. We find the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with town code chapter one, two, five. And approve the application inclusive of the application materials and plans by the iconic engineering D P C dated September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. We authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant satisfaction of the below conditions and requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Submission of the site plan in the form and number specified within their town code chapter one, two, five. Payment of any outstanding fees and or reimbursable amounts due to town of Ryanbeck related to the review and processing of applications subject to this resolution. And receipt of all approvals, authorizations or certifications required herein or from any other town, county, state or other agency as required to undertake the proposed actions. Could I hear a motion to approve, please?
So both Sharon.
Edna.
Thank, thank you. I will poll the board. Sharon?
Aye.
Edna?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Delise?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, once we have the final site plan ready for stamping and signing and it gets stamped and signed. We'll be all set to get a building permit.
Great.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Likewise. Take care. Be safe.
Our next public hearing is with Frank Pinto, one, five, five way road pool in addition. It's been requested by the applicant, they're still working with their engineer on the upgraded S D S. So they've requested to be moved to February first. So if I could hear a motion to continue this public hearing to February first at six forty P M, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Edna. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Very good. Okay, our final public hearing for the evening. Aaron Mulligan, four oh two Supasco Center Road, site plan special use permit, privacy fence. Is the applicant or the representative here?
Yes, Jeffrey Mulligan is here.
Okay. Um, I guess we were last discussing, there was a question as to whether you wish to proceed. With this application for the solid fence, which would, as you know, because of the variance given. Would also necessitate before a building permit could be issued, a planning plan. As per the zoning board of appeals variance approval and the condition being a submission of a planning plan for a planning board to approve. So I guess we're here tonight. Do you wish to proceed with this application? Or have you chosen to go with the other type of fence, which is not a solid fence, which would not require planning board of action?
We, we've decided to go ahead with, with the application.
Okay, with the solid fence.
Correct.
Okay. I guess what I'll do is just ask, are there any questions or comments from members of the planning board?
Yeah, I have a. I have a proposal for consideration by the applicant and the board. If I may have just a couple of minutes to go through it.
Yes.
Okay, I've already mentioned that I believe that the application as shown on the site plan. Would have a negative effect because it would create a tall, solid barrier right along a road that is an entrance to the community. And where there are no tall trees to soften the view. But I think there is a way to condition approval of this application. So that, that negative effect will be minimized and mitigated. We have shown that a solid fence is not required to provide privacy to the property from the road. We presented a photo of a widely available vinyl fence with three inch pickets and seven eighth spacing. That would provide ample privacy from the road. Particularly since anyone walking by will be at least sixteen or seventeen feet away from the fence. And any car passing would have only a fleeting glance at the fence. But Mr. Mulligan has also stated a desire to screen an adjacent lot at the roof of his property where a neighbor has stored equipment. So I would like to propose that the application be approved with two conditions. One, that a semi solid fence with openings between pickets. Will be used along the road and at the connection to the house. That will be visible from Supasso Center Street and Supasso Beach Drive with the rest of the fence being solid. And number two, that a professional planting plan be developed. And approved by the planting board chair before the fence be erected. That's my proposal.
Has the applicant agreed?
No, I'm, I'm asking the applicant to consider that and I'm asking the planning board to consider it.
Okay, well, I think that in the baldest terms I can come up with. The actual application is for a solid fence on all three, three exist, three sides proposed for the fence. So that's what's before us now. It would be entirely up to the applicant if they would choose to modify. That application along the lines that Edna has suggested. In either case, a proper planting plan will be required before I can stamp and sign the final plan as per the directive from the zoning board of appeals. But if the applicant would like to do that, what we might refer to as a hybrid type of offense, that is the applicant's decision. Right now, the application before us is for a solid fence with a proper planting plan to be. Carried out on, well, probably as far as soon as the growing season is back upon us. So, Mr. Mulligan, it's really up to you whether that, whether Ms. Lackman's proposal is something that you're comfortable with.
Yeah, I, I'm not comfortable with that at all. I think the application was issued because we were very much interested in getting a solid fence for both privacy and security reasons. We want to stick with that original plan. I don't, I also, I'm really uncomfortable with the wording of her second. Proposal in regards to getting a professional. Planting plan that needs to get approval from, I, I don't even know. What, or the planting committee or someone along those lines, that's, that's not something I want to agree to either. I mean, I think we, we prepared what was asked of us as far as a planting plan was, you know, and, and we submitted it. And it's never been an issue to this point. I don't understand why it's an issue now.
I think part of the, part of the question or part of the issue here now is that in their approval of the variance for the six foot height of the fence. The Z B A listed specific plants that they wanted to see in the plan. And that the, that plan then would actually be approved by me before I could stamp and sign. And for what it's worth, I have spent my career as a landscaper, greenhouse operator, nurseryman. So I actually am qualified to determine whether a planting plan is adequate or.
No, I think you misunderstood me. I thought she, I thought the request there from Edna was that. In addition to what we've already submitted, that she wants to have another whole planting plan put together, which. We're not interested in doing that either. I think you misunderstood me.
Okay.
Michael, can you, Michael? Michael, can you clarify for me? Am I correct that the zoning board of appeals did? Leave it up to the planning board to determine whether the planting plan was sufficient or not?
Yes, yes, they did. They named a number of the species of plants they would like to see. But they said that the final plan would be approved by the planning board and the planning board would have to approve the final plan for the variance to in fact be put into effect.
Right, I think the, the plants that they named as part of the, the zoning board variance that was approved was from the planning. The, the planting plan that we had given the planning board originally. We just kind of said, hey, this is. What we have already discussed with the planning board and the planning board has accepted or, you know, was okay with. And that's what we have already submitted to you guys. I'm getting a little confused as to, do we need to reissue or issue out a new plan? For plantings?
That would be. You know, you can put it together. A new plan would probably be good just in case there is any confusion here between what the Z B A was requiring, what the planning board had earlier discussed with you. Just to ensure that we're all on the same page. So if you could put together what you're proposing. Once again, I think that probably would be very helpful, you know, list the species, how you want to space them, how many there will be. That's important in terms of a screening effect. And I think that that will be what we require. I think will also answer what the Z B A was asking for. And I think then we can clear up any misconceptions or confusion as to exactly what planting plan we're talking about. We'll all be looking at the same one. Okay.
Speaking for myself, I would personally like to see the planting plan beefed up a little bit. And, and I was very difficult for me to decide because we were back and forth with the type of fence that we were going to end up with. So for me, knowing that you're going to go ahead and pursue having the solid fence, I'd like to see more vegetation screening map. That's my personal opinion.
And I, I would certainly be prepared to ask Gretchen to circulate that final plan to all members of the planning board to get your input.
Um, Michael, I haven't heard discussion of among members of the board about a solid fence versus. At least a partial fence, a semi. Does anyone else have any thoughts or comments on that?
View?
I'll, I'll make a few comments about it. This is Delise speaking. I think that. You know, my interpretation of, from the applicant's perspective is obviously they, you know, have an ideal for their backyard and therefore that makes sense of why they want to stick to the plan. And do that. And I think what Edna is trying to accomplish is some sort of middle ground that can really, you know, simplify this so that the, the visual sites are. What we, we, you know, what doesn't require this application at all while still having the compromise in the back. I think that it does make a lot of sense to sort of have that middle ground just because it does accomplish the visual elements that. You know, everyone hoped for and maybe makes it a little simpler when it comes to the landscaping. You know, and might just be a, a simpler way to accomplish what everyone's trying to achieve.
Thank you, Delise. Other comments? Okay, hearing none. It's a, basically the way I look at the applicant has put in an application before us asking for a specific thing. We've suggested modifying it and the applicant chooses not to do that. Therefore, I think it's up to us, all decisions by the planning board are at our discretion. We can approve or we can disapprove. We are not obligated to go one way or the other. We do use our discretion. So as I see it, what we have before us is a solid fence on all three, three faces here, a six foot solid fence for us. With a planting plan that we will get the final version of and we will go over and make sure that it meets the requirements that we have. Since the planning board also has to approve it according to the Z B A as well as what they mentioned. And either we vote it up or down. I believe legally, that's what we are restricted to.
Are we, are we looking to vote on it before we've seen the final landscape plan or would that come in first?
The final landscape plan would have to come in and be approvable by us prior to me stamping and signing.
So we aren't voting tonight?
We can do it either way that the, the planning board is most comfortable. Either we can vote tonight conditional upon getting a satisfactory planting plan, which the planning board can then approve so I can stamp and sign. Or we can wait and we can do approve or disapprove until we actually have been able to review the planting plan. Just if indeed that meets what we believe the Z B A has tasked us with. And I'm personally, I can go either way. However, the board is most comfortable. So I guess I'll ask. Okay.
To see the plan first.
Okay. Well, then I, what I'd like to do, and I'll have to ask Gretchen for me, to when can we continue the public hearing?
Hang on one sec. February first at six fifty.
Okay. Okay. Could I hear a motion to continue the public hearing to February first at six fifty?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Very good. Now, Mr. Mulligan, if you could get the planting plan to Gretchen and she can get it to all of us so that by February first, we've all familiar, we've been able to comment, make any suggestions. That we'd like to see if there are any modifications so that we're prepared on February first to move forward with an approval resolution.
Michael, what am I, what am I to get to that, that differs from what I've had, have already given to you?
If that's the planning plan that you wish us to go over. We can work with that. The planning board can look at it, see any modifications that they feel are necessary. So that we fulfill the obligation placed upon us by the zoning board of appeals. And once everyone is satisfied with the plan, because I think as a number of members of the board have mentioned. Most of the discussion that we've had has been on the nature of the fence, either the solid fence or the fence that's of the three foot pickets on it. And we really didn't spend a great deal of time discussing the landscaping. Now that the Z B A has made a proper landscaping plan, one of the conditions, and they named a number of species they would like to see in it. But they want the planning board to make the final decision. I think we need to make sure that we're fulfilling that obligation that's been placed upon us. So we can take.
I understand that.
If there's anything else you thought you might want to add. I'm sorry?
Okay, no, I, I, I understand. Okay, I think I understand. I'm just, I was just confused as to. Do I need to add anything different than what I, you know, the, the planting plan that we had already previously given to you?
If you thought the.
I think I can.
Yes, Melody?
I, I, I offered the, my opinion that it, it needs to be more robust. It needs to have more lands, more landscape material. I mean, for me, if we were moving toward a fence that had some openness to it, then I would have been happy with sparser vegetation. But since you're continuing to go in the direction of the higher. Solid fence, then I want to see it softened by more vegetation. So no. If I'm understanding your question correctly, what you've already submitted is not sufficient, in my opinion.
I agree with that.
Michael, I think, you know, on, on the plan, we just need a key so we know. Which of the, which material is, is being represented by whatever shown on, on the drawing that's being provided. Unless I'm mistaken, I don't think we have like a, I don't think we have a key that tells us which material is which. So just, we just need something to, you know, that, that, that'll be able to be followed.
Okay.
And hopefully we will be in a position to consider the approval resolution at our February first meeting.
Michael, my own stance is not enough direction has been given to Mr. Mulligan. For him to understand what it is the planning board would consider. A sufficient plan. Do you agree, Melody? I mean, how can we say more so that this is clear?
Well, I think it's been very difficult because we had so many variables. You know, so many options available to us going forward. The other thing where I think. Mr. Mulligan could get, try and get some advice. The other thing where I think Mr. Mulligan could get, try and get some advices, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that you've expressed, Mr. Mulligan, some concerns about, um, you don't want a planting plan that requires a lot of maintenance or a lot of watering. So the selection of the material is going to be very important because we're going to be very concerned that this is sustainable. And if we're putting it up as an aesthetic buffer, which is what we are doing, um, we, we have to be confident that it's going to thrive and grow and do the job we want it to do. So I don't know, you know, what kind of advice can be made available to you. And I'm talking whether there are organizations or institutions. I've said that in the past, we had someone on the CAB that was very, um, that was a landscaper and very knowledgeable. And we often referred applicants like this to the CAB to develop with them a planting plan. I'm not personally familiar with the current members of the CAB. So I don't know if there's anyone there that has that skill that could provide assistance to the Mulligans. We, we could certainly ask if there's anyone on the CAB that is available to assist in the development of a plan.
That we can do. I, I don't know myself if, I know that, uh, yeah, I, I don't know if any of them have that background. I also know the cooperative extension out in Millbrook has a horticulture department that might be helpful with the type of plants that would be successful in the area where you're going to be planting. I don't think it's exactly zere escaping, but I think you're looking for low water type of plants. You're not looking for, you know, plants that need a tremendous amount of water to thrive. But I think asking the CAB is probably a good place to start. And they're volunteers, so it's free.
Well, and they may be willing, um, certainly they had interest in this project right from the beginning. So they maybe, if they don't have the expertise to help us find people who can provide the expertise.
Yeah.
Okay, that's true.
Thank you.
Michael, Michael, you'll read, Michael, you'll, you'll reach out to CAB and then let the.
Yes, I will.
Oh?
Yes, I will.
Does that answer the question, Edna?
Well, I think, uh, you've been very helpful. Yes, thanks.
Okay, we have one more. We have a new application. Mario Sostow, Rhine Cliff Road, single family, site plan review, single family dwelling.
Yes, I'm here.
The applicant or the representatives here?
Yes, I'm here.
Ah, if you could present to us what it is that you'd like to do.
Well, basically it's an existing, uh, 100 by two, 25 lot. And we'd like to put a, uh, three bedroom, one family dwelling on the site.
Do we have a depiction of what it is you're proposing to do?
I have the site plan.
Okay, if you could take us through your site plan?
Well, right now you're showing the, uh, the fixtures that you asked me to, uh.
Yeah, I was looking to see if I could find the rendering, but the site plan should be back up. Oh, no, it's not, hold on. Now the site plan should be up. Is it up now?
Yep.
Okay, sorry about that.
Uh, okay, I mean, basically you have the, the lot, the driveway, which, uh, we've got a permit in with the, the New York State DOT, which has been approved for the driveway. We've got plans into the building department, but obviously we have to go through the planning board first. It's, uh, the house itself is situated within the setbacks. And, uh, the septic system, which is also been, uh, it's into its, uh, final review. We just had to get the, uh, water tap, uh, application approved. And, uh, basically the back of the yard is, uh, the whole septic. And the house sits there and the front of the house, well, the out, where the driveway goes, the entrance to the garage will be on the side. So we don't have cars sitting in the front. And there'll be a front porch in that alcove there to the, I guess that's the south of the garage. The yellow indicates the trees, the existing trees that have to come down for the septic and the house. And basically that's it.
The, the septic system is a fill system. In other words, it's, fill is going to be necessary to build it up in order for the leach field to be installed.
Yes, because of the clay, there's no other way around it and the new requirements for the septic.
Okay. Have, are there any variances required in terms of setbacks, anything like that?
No.
Okay. Okay, Jim, the one possible problem that might be hit, and it's easily overcome, is the garage looks like it is situated in front of, it's part of the main structure. But under our zoning law, all garages are considered a detached accessory structure. Do we have that same problem here that we had in that discussion earlier today? That the garage is sitting in front of the house, the primary, even though it's part of the house?
Yep, that, that's a good point, Michael. I don't believe I actually caught that in my memo. Um, I had talked about the setbacks being slightly different than the others. But yeah, I don't think I caught that the garage was in front of the house. So I believe you're right. We may need to, um, go to Michelle and find out about that variance needed. Is that those, the definition that we run into before?
Yeah. But that's something you can get a variance for. It doesn't mean you can't proceed with the project, but you would need to get a variance from the ZBA. For some reason in our zoning law, all garages, even if they are actually part of the house structure, are considered detached accessory structures. And detached accessory structures cannot sit in front of the front line of the primary structure, which in this case would be your home. So it's a little confusing and, and this instant doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But unfortunately, that's the way the law is written. So that's what we have to deal with.
Jim, are you able to, I was going to ask Jim if he could pull this up on parcel access? Because I think, um, what's interesting, uh, as I recall from our pre-application meeting is this parcel of land where Mr. Sostow wants to build the house, sits on, on the road going into Rhine Cliff in a, in a area. It's very, the property is very constrained. It's almost like it's the last little plot of land once this was laid out for housing along there. So I just think it's interesting for the board to see how, um, how Mr. Sostow has to work within what I consider to be a very constrained parcel. Which I think leads to how he's had to configure the house and the garage.
Mm-hmm.
Speaking, Mr. Sostow?
Yes, uh, and also as you can see on the site plan, you can see to the right and to the left, the existing buildings. And I'm further setback even further than the 50 feet. If you.
But, but he's, you know, and you can see it on parcel access. He's, he's done a good job of citing it in a way that sort of keeps the, the line of housing along here sort of contiguous and even. So there isn't this back and forth sort of uneven instruction.
Yeah.
But if we can't pull it up, I would encourage people to look at that.
I just got it to come up just now. Wasn't working with. Can everyone see where we are here? It's the highlighted site here, eight, nine, one, two, eight, four.
So you see the even row of houses all along there with this one vacant lot. And this is the one in question. And so I think once constructed, it will fit in nicely. But he's working, you know, in a, in a small lot, um, with a lot going on around him.
And all the other houses have garages in the front.
Yeah, well, they were all before the new zoning law, unfortunately. But, but it's, you know, you're making a fair point.
In the existing lot, you know, being there, being the same as the others is, um, you know, why, you know, in, in the pre-app meeting, um, I think it was, I think I recommended that, um, that Mr. Sostow asked for a, the planning board for, for waiver of 101, 10 down two, um, which is what I put in my memo, uh, where the planning board has the ability to waive certain, um, regulations if they cause unusual hardship or extraordinary difficulties. This being an existing lot that's been there for a while that is built on both sides, um, I believe would fit the bill for that regarding lot size. And so that was why I had suggested that. Um, so, so it all kind of falls into the same theme, um, kind of what's going on with the site.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from members of the planning board?
Michael, this is Jim, I had just one, this is Jim, I had one question for Mr. Sostow. I was just curious what material, um, you were proposing for the driveway? It looks like there might've been two different materials here, but maybe the different shading was just for what you had for the construction entrance. Do you know, are you proposing a paved driveway? And this is just showing us differences, you know, for construction or?
Well, the, uh, I guess the DOT wants a paved, you know, asphalt entrance to a certain point. And then for now, we're just thinking it's going to be gravel. The reason the different shading, I think, was just the original drawing for, because it originated from, uh, the septic. So when they designed the septic, they put in just a gravel road to get to the back so that they can fill. And, but it's going to probably just, you know, be a gravel driveway. Uh, it's going to be filled. So I mean, the underneath part has to be larger stones and stuff like that that'll support weight. And then the top surface will just be gravel, I would say.
But, but the amount, but the, uh, the area that attaches to Rhine Cliff Road will be paved per DOT regs?
Yes, per DOT.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I have a procedural resolution. Uh, the town of Rhine Cliff Planning Board, your vote acts as follows. An allocation by Mario Sostow for site plan approval under Town Code, Chapter 125, for construction of a single family residence on Rhine Cliff Road. Then the RM1 residential median density zoning district, we accept the application and supporting documents as adequate for further review by the planning board, its advisors in the public. And we classify their proposed action as type two under seeker. We're scheduling a public hearing of the application for February 1st at 6:35. And Director Clerk, who undertake or otherwise caused the noticing or posting thereof. We're going to delegate planning board members who wants to go out on Rhine Cliff Road. Apparently not a lot of people.
Oh, God.
I'll go. Sharon?
Yes, I'll go.
Okay. If you feel visiting the project site and report observations at the time of public hearing. In accordance with Town Code, Chapter 9, Conservation Advisory Board, refer the application to the Conservation Advisory Board for review and written comment concerning environmental factors. And in accordance with Town Code, Chapter 118, Waterfront Advisory Committee, we refer the application to Waterfront Advisory Committee for review and written comment concerning consistency with the LWRP. In accordance with Duchess County Planning, we are referring it to the Duchess County Department of Planning and Development Review. And we're referring the application to the Duchess County Department of Health for review and approvals for all proposed septic systems and authorizing without prejudice to any information or comment that may be presented at the public here or may arise based on both the above cited field visit and referral, preparation of a working draft of an approvals resolution for the planning board's consideration on February 1st or as maybe later timely. All righty, could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved, Melody.
Second. Thank you, Edna. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, we will be getting in touch with you, uh, Sharon and I about setting up a time to do a site visit. And come on, just take a look. And, um, so we will be in touch.
Okay.
Um, thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, Happy New Year. Okay, as you all know,
I'm told.
The town board has referred to us a, I think both, they've referred to us both, the rewriting of the country into, uh, whoop, country into, and the definitions uh, for hospitality industries as well for determining occupancy, determining density. My understanding, I believe we have 60 days to look at it. I think that we were thinking of trying to do this on the, um, is this it? Country into, yeah. So we don't, we just have country into Jim? We don't have the, uh, definitions in this referral?
Uh, no, I believe this was only country into, I think the, the public hearing notice, I think, had the wrong name in it. Or they sent us the wrong one. Yeah, it had the wrong name. Um, yeah, the, the referral for tonight is for country into.
Okay. Um, I was thinking it might be good to put this on our agenda for the 19th. Um, wait a minute, is that the right way to take four, eight, 19? Yes, because we have our next meeting in January. To give everyone a chance to read this, look over it, um, you know, come up with any ideas, thoughts, comments, concerns, things of that sort that we can then forward on to the town board. And if, if that's, uh, if you're all comfortable with that, we'll, we'll proceed in that way, if that's all right with everyone.
I think that's a good idea.
So, this is Jim. So I didn't put a whole lot of detail in this draft, um, referral response. I think that in my mind, there are four, well, five different elements to this, um, that probably can, can get some comment to them. I think numbers one and five that I put in the draft, um, are probably pretty, pretty safe putting those in there that the board agrees that, that we need some, some assistance, um, with the code uh, due to lack of specificity in the codes. That's what numbers one and five are. But two, three and four are really where I think, um, you know, we'll be looking at having the discussion next time uh, about what we want to say in, in the referral back. In addition to anything else you find, of course. So.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, well, as I, as I mentioned, my understanding is tomorrow, the town board has its reorganization meeting. And they will be making, uh, appointments to the planning board, including the chairmanship. But also I believe I did see that their Josh Pulver is still going to be assigned to be our, the A is on. Um, maybe we can entice him to come to one of our meetings so we can see what we do. Does anyone else have any comments they'd like to make tonight?
No.
Hearing none, could I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Melody.
Second?
Second, Sharon.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned at 8:20, I guess it is.